Porta potties were placed in strategic places throughout the city. We conducted a wellness check on seniors and those who were disabled. Staff delivered water to all senior facilities and various departments for those who were unable to pick up their own water. We had a tanker on standby to support the fire department from GMA, and we learned of residents plumbing leaks and breaks for those citizens who were out of town. We sent staff to their homes to turn off their water meters. Mayor Molly Broome created a video that was distributed through social media providing real-time updates. Our communication department provided accurate updates at regular intervals. Department heads were available via email and cell phones even if they were scheduled to be off during this time. While we worked to make sure this does not happen again, but if it does, here's what we are working on for our plan of action. We're updating any procedures and protocols. We're starting a SWOAS. That means taking time to identify strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats and using that information to create a solid plan of action. Now, Rob and Tim will share more details about the technical side of things. But I want to assure all of you that we are learning from this, and we are, and will continue to take steps to put a solid plan in place. We know better, so we can be better. So again, our sincere apology. So now, for his presentation, please say hello to Rob McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Jackson. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Rob McPherson with Prime Engineering, and I put together a little PowerPoint presentation to sort of walk through what occurred over the last week. And Chevalier, if you could pull that up. This is, there are a few extra slides and a few extra comments that are in this presentation that are not in your packet, and these were added on after the Thursday submill from last week. First is, as you see on the screen, is this is the citywide water system map, and I wanted to show that to you just so you could have a better understanding of the water system. The city has two connections to the city of East Point on the north side of town, one at Jackson and one at Lisle. There are two elevated water storage tanks, one referred to as the Charleston Water Tank. That water tank is a 500,000 gallon water storage tank. Then there's another one at the West Fayetteville Road, that is a 750,000 gallon water tank. And immediately adjacent to the West Fayetteville Tank is our connection to the Clayton County Water Authority System, where we also have an interconnection and where we take water from that system. And then we have an emergency connection with the city of Atlanta down off of Sullivan Road next to where the old College Park Conference Center used to be located. Next slide. On Saturday, December 22nd, the system appeared to be in good condition, operating fine with no losses that we were aware of. We did determine that a water tank transmitters, those transmitters froze from the cold sub-freezing temperature, and those were sending up back some signals to our SCADA system that were not accurate in terms of the levels in those water tanks. But once those were thawed out and the temperatures came back up, they were reading again fine. And that occurred in the same timeframe, same day. The Clayton County began a boil water advisory because of leaks in their system, pressure drops in their system, the drop below 20 PSI, they issued the boil water advisory for their system. On Sunday, December 25th, East Point called that afternoon requesting that we shut down the transfer pumps because of water level drops in their tanks and system pressure concerns that they had with their system. They did not want it to drop below 20 PSI because that is the threshold where you have to ask all the citizens to boil water. They were losing pressure in their tanks. They did not know exactly why. We were looking at our system feeling like we did not have any major issues in our systems, and there was water break in their system that seemed to be causing the problem. We did shut down both those pump stations so that the system, the East Point system could try to get their system back up to a pressure that was where they wanted to be operating at. We opened the valve to the city of Atlanta, turned on the pumps there, which is a very small connection and provides a very limited water supply. We also turned on water from Clayton County, but the pump there started smoking, and so we had to shut it down. And we don't know if that was just because the pump went bad or whether the low pressure in that system didn't feed enough water to it to cool it and presented a problem there. We also were notified of a water leak on Hemp Hill and Cambridge, it's a six-inch line in the city, and immediately began repairing and put place that line back in service. Again, at that point in time, the pressure in the system still appeared to be good. Then on Saturday, I mean on Monday, the 26th, we continued to have problems getting water from the main supplier of the city of East Point. We were only running one pump, and often that was only at one-hour increments, so very short timeframe. East Point was still trying to determine their source of water loss. They felt like it might be us. We felt like things were, you know, we did have some water loss, some water leaks, but we did not know of any major water leaks. We drove the entire, Tim immediately drove the entire system, looking for visible water leaks, and did not find any water leaks at that time. Still, there was no water from Clayton County due to their boil water advisory, and we had minimal flow coming from the city Atlanta system. We did come across another leak on Monday at Almond and Rugby. Again, that was another six-inch line. That line was repaired. Again, we still maintained water pressure in our system. We had not gone below the 20 PSI, which would require the boil water advisory. Then on Tuesday, things started to get a good bit worse. On Tuesday morning, the water pressure had dropped down to that point where we dropped below the 20 PSI, we issued the boil water advisory notice. We learned that East Point had discovered a major leak in their warehouse that consisted of a 16-inch and an eight-inch line, and they believed that that was the major cause and source of water level drops and pressure system drops in their system. Again, we were still not getting any water from Clayton County, and we had no pumps to pull from them, so we...
Someone's saying, can you talk closer to the mic?
I'll be glad to. The Clayton County, West Fayetteville System where our pumps had gone down, we brought in an emergency pump and made a connection there so that as soon as Clayton County's water system came back on service, in service, we would be able to immediately pull water from that system and get it into our tank. Again, minimal flow from the city of Atlanta. Another water leak was discovered at Pierce and Rugby. This was a six-inch line, and the department heads had their first meeting on that afternoon. During that meeting, or prior to that meeting, we had made arrangements to get a truckload of drinking water brought into the city that would be delivered that evening to the GICC where city staff would then move it over to the fire stations so that the fire stations could hand it out to the citizens. On the 28th, Wednesday, a lot of things going on then. Again, we continued to have problems with East Point delivery, but they were beginning to get their system stabilized. They were allowing us to run our pumps a little bit longer, a little more often, and that was a really good sign because we knew at that point in time, okay, we can start to see some pressure system increases in our systems, which made us feel like we were moving in the right direction. Again, still no water from Clayton County, although we did speak to the county manager and start to work with him on trying to develop an alternative way for them to get water to us and to help us get some water into our system. We found a leak on John Wesley near Conley. This was on a dead-end line over in the Six West Development. We believed that whole system over there had been turned off, but this was one line that had served an old apartment complex over there that had been torn down, and apparently that dead-end line that fed that complex was still active. And so you had a line that had no water moving in it, the likelihood of freeze in it increases, and that leak was discovered on Wednesday, and the valve was immediately shut off. We did not repair that line because there's no customers on it. We also began starting to use the smart meters information. We started trying to find homes that had excessive flow going through their water meters, and as soon as we found those, we, the initial was 37 homes, the water department immediately started going out to those homes, trying to find the homeowners, no homeowners, tried to figure if the meter was flowing, and if it was, they would shut it off, and if necessary, put a hanger on the door to notify that resident that there was excessive flow going through their meter. Again, we drove the entire city looking for leaks, trying to find sources of leaks, but we were seeing increased pressure in our system. We were starting to see the pressure at the tanks start to increase. We had two more truckloads of drinking water brought in, delivered to the GICC for residents. The police started distributing potable water to any residents that needed it, the elderly and shut-ins that requested it. And at that point in time, we were having three weekly, I mean three daily calls amongst the department heads, six o'clock in the morning, noon, and then four o'clock in the afternoon, trying to make sure everybody was abreast of what was going on, everybody, action steps were given to each person, and the department heads took off and tried to accomplish their task. Thursday overnight, or Thursday morning, again, the pressure, we started seeing, started seeing real signs that we were getting on top of the leak issues and the pressure, sources of pressure issues. And the water flows, city of East Point provided continuous water supply with one pump pretty much the whole day. They got a second pump ring around noon, but we started, we got up to 60 PSI in the Charleston tanks. Still no water from Clayton, and, but we knew that, at that time, we felt like water was, we were going to be able to get some water from them later that evening. They were going to isolate some lines and try to push water up West Fayetteville Road to our tank so that we could then pump it into our system. Boil water was still in effect. We had two more truckloads of delivered water to us, and again, you can see we met three times during the day to communicate with all department heads on the activities of what was going on. On Friday evening, I say Friday evening, Friday morning actually, it was at midnight, Clayton County allowed us to turn the valve at the meter at our tank and start filling up the Charleston tank with water. We got it about 90, I think about 90, 95% full that evening. It was about four hours of continuous flow. The city of East Point's pumps were continuously running. We had one pump continuously running from them, and by Friday morning, we had our tanks completely, or at about 90% full and pressure restored in the system. We then made arrangements with the city of East Point to sample our waters and get us results back on the following day. It was a 24-hour test. They took 12 samples throughout the city and took those back to their labs. We did not have any trucks deliver any water as we had plenty of potable water, or drinking water rather, and bottles on hand, and we turned off the valve with the city of Atlanta because that small source of water was no longer needed. We had two department meetings on that day, one at nine o'clock in the morning and then one at three o'clock in the afternoon. On Saturday, the city of East Point let us know that those samples came back negative and that the water was good to use and that the boil water advisory could be dropped, and that was sent out around three o'clock in the afternoon. And I think that sort of gives an overall summary. So what are the next steps? What we have discussed internally is trying to do a more thorough investigation into our system, as well as meeting with the city of East Point and Clayton County to discuss in more detail some of the problems that they had and how they intertwined with our system so that we can then try to put together some action steps on what we need to do to reinforce our system, make our system better, more reliable, and some of those, we do not know what those things could, you know, will be right now, but they might be adding a ground tank, a new pump station, a new designated connection. There's a number of different options that we can look at, and we will be exploring those. But until we have a real full understanding in more detail on why the system went down other than just extremely, you know, we had extremely cold weather, and we had many utilities around the metro Atlanta area that experienced these same problems, and in our case, our main water supplies come from East Point and Clayton County, and both of those systems went down or just about completely down.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. I will start with questions with Councilman Clay.
Well, I was home all through the crisis. I hadn't been planning to go out of town, but we couldn't for other reasons, and I don't know, I guess I'm one of the people, I don't know how many people reported the leak on Rugby and I guess it was Pierce that was leaking, and the guys came out as soon as they could and worked on that. The guys were digging at Hemp Hill and Cambridge. There was just a lot of good work done, I thought, by the staff. So I don't have so many questions at this point. I think that going forward, we need to reactivate, and I think a lot of other people feel the same way, our work on emergency planning, how you organize the city and so forth. I mean, we did, we did get up to speed pretty quickly, but it could always be better, and I think we need particularly to work on that. I know, at some point, I suggested, and maybe it was suggested by other people as well, that we use the automated metering system to determine where we were losing water in private homes, partly because a lot of people were out of town, and at least it would save them from coming back and having a gigantic water bill as well as having a damaged home. And I think, and this is more for the citizens than for you, the investment, and I know we went through a lot of grief with the automated water metering system and so forth, but I think it paid off this time, at least for the homeowners that we saved a lot of damage. So the one thing I would like to see is, at one time, we had sensors installed on major pipes in the city because we were trying to, we were losing at one time in the city about 20% of our water, I think. This was a number of years ago. And we embarked on a campaign to improve the water distribution system and fix the leak, and Public Works did a really good job on that apparently because we only had four major leaks, and they weren't, and I happened to be on a test team for C Click Fix, which is the app that East Point uses to report problems, and the app that we've been using to report problems hasn't worked terribly well. People have to log in and what have you. Anyhow, to make a long story short, I was getting detailed reports throughout the whole thing on C Click Fix, and we were, we were, we looked good compared to the number of breaks. Of course, East Point is a much larger city as well. So I would like to see us look into, in addition to what I think everybody thinks, which is we got to improve our emergency planning and so forth, and probably everybody in the metro Atlanta area is thinking the same thing right now. I would like us to relook at installing sensors on our mains that we, I think we have the adapters in the water pipes now, and it's a matter, we were moving them around because they weren't totally inexpensive and we didn't want to buy a whole bunch of them. But I think maybe we want to put them in place and leave them in place and become aware of a major problem, just like we've invested in the electrical system where we're now putting in, we're now able to localize a breakdown in the electrical system, in the transmission system within the city, and we can isolate it, cut it off. I'm not saying we have to automate shutting off the water valves to the main lines, but I would sure like to see us be able to sense in the main lines. That's something we couldn't do readily with the, you couldn't do that with the automated meter system, but we could with these other leak detectors that we had intended to put in the system. So I'd just like to compliment the staff particularly, and I think part of our emergency plan needs to improve our communication with everybody because had we had better communication from our sources, and of course, if we could find another source or what have you, that would be nice. It doesn't seem that's likely from what I've heard, but in any event, so I don't have a lot of questions. I think I understand the problem. So thanks again.
Councilman Carter?
All right. A couple of things. First question, did you put this report together?
I did with the help of staff.
Very well thought out and thorough report, and I think that's so important for us to have something like this even after we've had, you know, a crisis situation. I think it affected, obviously it affected a lot of residents. I want to thank staff for the job that they did. From this report, you know, I can now see that, you know, this was very, very well coordinated. Matter of fact, one of the best coordinated efforts, you know, with department heads working together, working in earnest without working in silos, without working in egos, and I definitely applaud all of the staff for sitting that luggage down for a minute and to get at the crisis at hand. So I definitely appreciate that very, very, very much. When something happens, you know, we're going to drop the ball sometimes, and there was a lot of factors of this were completely beyond our scope of control, obviously. But whatever the situation is, when the smoke clears, a full assessment of what happened is really important, like this. It's very, very important so we can understand what happened. A lot of times, people think, well, we goofed and somebody's going to get in trouble, so we're just going to say we goofed and we don't know what happened, or we never get an explanation of what happened at the end of the day. This is what's supposed to happen, and it's a good thing, and it doesn't speak unkindly or diminish staff's efforts. I think it enhances staff's efforts when we have a good, solid explanation and timeline of what happened and what occurred. I was here for the holidays. I had family here for the holidays. We had some water issues as well, but I will say overall, considering, you know, I think we came out okay. It affected a lot of different parts of our neighborhoods in different ways. You know, there's an old saying that comes in many iterations. When the middle class sneezes, the poor usually catch the flute. A lot of us have probably heard that in a lot of different ways, and I'm sure our residents know what I'm talking about. You know, the poorest among us in our communities are usually and generally going to suffer more acutely from many issues that are... gonna suffer more acutely from many issues that arise. So the issues in our apartment complexes were compounded because of the fact that they're kept in, in my opinion, some of them are kept in not up to standards in terms of maintenance, upkeep and repair. So with a lot of our complexes, we had water service back on even if it was low pressure or whatever have you, but many of them had no service at all because their pipes were so outdated and old that even if we had service off the street, they couldn't turn back on for a few days even after the crisis was over. You know, when we got wind of this, and again, Ambrose spoke to the need more communication with us. Now, this is great communication post, and we did get communication from staff. But the more we know, the more we can inform our residents about what's going on. Code reds were good. Appreciate that. It got a lot of good information out. And we need to make sure we sign up more people for code reds. A lot of those numbers we're calling, I don't know if that list is purged. And when I say this, city manager, you know, we have a turnstile operation going on in a lot of our apartment communities. So let's say someone comes in and signs up for code red. Well, six months later, they may be gone. And we may still be dialing that code red number perhaps, you know. So there's a lot of things we can tighten up on our end to make sure we're getting the notifications out to people that need it. How many new power customers signed up for code red? I did get a good number of code red folks, and that's, it was a good, strong number. But I said to myself, how, how, is that list purged or refreshed? So those are some other things when there's an emergency. We want to make sure we're talking to the folks that we need to be talking to about it. But giving that full accounting, explanation of what happened is important after the fact. You know, exactly what happened, where it was happening, in sequence, you know, and most importantly, why it happened to our residents. You know, I have an understanding of it. You know, I've lived here all my life. And, you know, we get, every now and then, we get some winners that'll dip into the teens. But it's been over 20 years since we've seen, you know, consecutive days of single digit. You know, when you dip into single digits, you know, nobody's plumbing in the southeast, you know, has the capacity for sub-zero stuff. Now, up north, I've got family, and the further up north you go, you know, those pipes are hardened and winterized for that type of sub-zero consistency. You know, you may have a three-inch pipe there, and it's gonna have that six-inch core of polyurethane, you know, cellulose, and then with the aluminum cover on that. And then you have other pipes that they run hot wires through to keep them going where those temperatures are, you know, it's impossible to keep pipes from freezing unless you take those kind of measures for pipes. Georgia doesn't have that kind of infrastructure, you know, and most certainly, there's College Park. So it's one of those things where, you know, it was a situation where, you know, we're not structured for that type of winter, because we don't have those type of winters. So I think it went good overall. I think getting the water out was very, very important. In my community, I got so many calls, I couldn't wait for Coca-Cola to come through with the water. I had to go out and buy several hundred gallons myself, and I went out and bought them. And the first night, I loaded them up in my truck, and we covered our apartments until, oh, nine-thirty in the evening. And we dropped off as many as we could, hundreds. And people were really appreciative, but I'm glad we did get water through and we got sufficient water through. That was really good. I'm on this website, it's a Nextdoor app, Camp Creek Nextdoor Neighbors. And a lot of people associate and comment on those on this website here. And I did get a, I saw a post here I want to read that was from one of our local neighbors. And it's real short, so, says, "I am very grateful for the cases of bottled water that the College Park dropped off on my porch last Thursday. I was down to my last few bottled waters. I did not call to request it, and I don't know who did. My neighbor said she saw them dropping it off, but said she didn't make the request either. I am grateful. My hip is out, and it would have been a struggle to go and get it myself. A big thank you." So, you know, we make, I think we made the best of a dire situation. And we want to always think about covering our residents as best as we can. And I think everybody, every department worked together and did a really, really good job considering the situation we were in. So I just want to thank you all, but this post-assessment is very important. And this is the type of stuff I'd like to see from here on out when there is an issue, so that we can actually find out what happened so we won't do it again, or so we can come up with some preventative measures and put something in place. But if nobody wants to explain to us what happened, that's when you're more likely to repeat what happened. So this is good. This is absolutely good, and this is a good model for when things go on. This is the type of assessment I'd like to see going forward when anything happens and when anything goes down. It doesn't point fingers. It tells the story of what happened so that we know what happened, we know where the weaknesses were, and we can prevent them the next time. So this is a good report, and like city manager said, I want to send out an apology to our residents as well, because, you know, they're dependent on us for this service. And generally, we have pretty good service in terms of our utilities that we can control. We don't handle our own water. You know, unlike a power substation, you know, without, you know, our power couldn't function even if our neighbor's power goes out. You know, with the water, it's not the case. We're a little more connected with this type of stuff. So residents have to understand and realize that most residents may not know where College Park water comes from. They may just think College Park, you know, handles all their water systems, you know. So, but it's a good learning lesson, and I'm glad it's a rare occasion. I don't think this is gonna happen too often. I hope that we don't hit those type of temperatures. But I think we did pretty good overall, so. Great job, staff, city manager. I know it was a headache. I'm sure. I would imagine. I wouldn't have wanted your job last week. So, but I think you did a great job. All of the department heads, y'all really stepped up, and we really do appreciate it. We recognize it, and I know a team effort when I see a team effort. And that was truly a team effort, so kudos to you guys.
And I, councilman, I would also like to add that several of the department heads had vacation, and they came off vacation to just reiterate that. And I'm proud of those, like the chief, I'll recognize him, but I'm proud of those people decided that this was more important than their vacation.
That, that's the name of the game. And that's what we want to get to totally, and I think that's where we're going in getting there. So thank y'all again, and city manager, I want to see if we can figure out some kind of way to put together something for department heads as some kind of a thank you. I don't know if you can come up with something within reason, I think, if everybody's interested. But I really want to let y'all know how much we appreciate y'all. In turn, maybe we throw a little dinner or lunch or something, you know, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, but I like to do something for all of our departments for the extra work and going above and beyond, so. Thank y'all again.
Councilman Allen.
Okay, yeah, just a couple of comments. Again, like everybody else, thank you very much for this. This is good information. I'm sure it'll even be updated more as the more you communicate with the emergency planning group. I've been involved with a couple of emergencies over my lifetime, and none of them are fun. Two with Delta when we had a plane crash in Dallas, and again with nine eleven. And they are unexpected when they do happen. And the key is assembling a good group whenever you can, but also to try to be ahead and pre-plan and have emergency programs in place where you can easily adapt to whatever the situation is. I have to thank Tim Lewis, your crew were unbelievable. I don't know how many hours they averaged per day, but I can tell you, it had to be well over 12 hours, 15 hours a day, your people were working because they did an awful lot of work, and it is appreciated. I think one big key is communications. Once you got the group together, once you found out what was happening, you did start communicating. But I think we need to start off at the beginning and make sure we're communicating not only with our citizens, but with East Point, with Clayton County, with the city of Atlanta if we need to, and work with these people to make sure that we're communicating what we're doing, because it could affect what they're doing and the same thing vice versa. I just, I want to thank a lot of neighbors that got involved, a lot of citizens that were reporting leaks. I know I had a pipe bust in my garage, and one of my neighbors let me know. We did have it cut off at the street until I got home. But neighbors need to be looking out for neighbors, and that's what was happening. And thanks very much to the police and the fire for providing the water for people that needed. I know Princeton Court, I got several calls, and they got water delivered straight to them. They appreciated every single bit of it, so thanks to everybody that was involved. Rob, thank you very much for your time, that you got involved with this, and all the department heads. So that's all I got to say. Thank you very much. I appreciate what everybody's done. Did we make some mistakes? Yeah, we always make some mistakes. Are we gonna learn from them? Yes, but we did a lot of things right. A lot of very good things right, so I appreciate what everybody did in the city.
Councilman Gay.
Well, I think we got enough thank yous, so I don't think I need to keep thanking y'all. But I do have some observations and recommendations, okay? So I would recommend that we have a discussion about doing a study with the most tax money when it start coming in to look at what our system needs, what improvements that we would need before we commit to towers or wells. I think a study could tell us better what to do. One of the things I observed is that I also stayed on the phone, so I do want to thank Jackson for taking my calls, because I actually call all four of those days. One thing I did notice is that there were just different communications ongoing, like you all staff was talking, but we weren't, I wasn't being updated. So I had to call you, I had to call Tim, I just called everywhere. So next, going forward, there was a way to, I don't know if we can legally do it, but to keep the elected officials plugged into those conversations, because I wasn't knowing what was going on. But I know you all were talking. The third thing I found out is that when, because of so many people are retiring, because of all the interim directors, one of the things that I think we need to constantly do is to keep all our intergovernment departments informed of who's in place, who our engineers are, who our interim public works director. Because what I heard was that there was some communication where they didn't know who was in place. So for example, Clayton County calling us, who do you call? Some people calling Mike Masons. So just to update that line of communication. I'd like to know more about what our wells did, the wells that we bought. I'd like to know what do we get out of it in terms of additional water? What did it service? I know we spent a considerable amount of money for those wells. I heard my colleagues talk a little bit about the code red, but one thing I would like to know, I know code red is basically a dialing service where you add the data into the... We need to look at somebody, maybe IT, configuring code red the way it can communicate in different parts of the city, instead of just a blanket number, you know, blanket call, which is effective, but there could have been a way to communicate to some areas that had pressure, didn't have pressure, or whatever. So being able to departmentalize code red by ward zones or whatever could be a better way to increase our communication. Ironically, we had water on some houses, but other houses didn't have water, so it made it difficult to understand really what was going on. Or at least to try and explain it to them from a lay point of view. They couldn't understand. The other observation I would make is that I, me personally, I would be curious to know what city of Atlanta charges us for water. I know that we are East Point and Clayton County's largest wholesale customers. And I know they did everything they could do, but there were times where I wasn't feeling the love. In other words, I know, I know, I know that, I know that Atlanta service, Fairville, right?
South Fulton, too.
In Fairburn.
Fair. But I heard that even if their, even if their levels are low, they still make sure that their customers, you know, I just want to make sure that, that... But I would like to know what the water costs to Atlanta, just to have that. And a couple of final things is, I know there was a lot of things, but Melissa, I know she was with the city, from what I was hearing, she was taking charge. Melissa in East Point was taking charge. She was making suggestions, making recommendations. I know Tim, I called him so much, but he never, not took my call. He was praying, right, Tim? You told me you were praying, right? For the tank at Charleston to fill up. So that's pretty much, now, I don't know, I thought Councilman Cohen was gonna touch on this, but I understand that there's a tower on Pearl Street in East Point that was put there 10 years ago as an emergency source of water. I think it's about a million gallon tank. So we drove by there this morning, I looked at it, and I understand that the city of East Point and College Park could have a conversation about tapping into that and putting it into their distribution system, but that's not currently going on now. So that tank could have very well been an extra source of water. So that's all I have.
So for those of you in the audience, I believe that we have some note cards available if you have questions about this particular issue. The note cards are located on the, is that right? They are located on the area where you got the agenda. So if you have questions about this particular issue, Mr. McPherson is here to answer those along with the team. So if you'd like to write those out and hand those in, we can absolutely take those. So feel free to do that. I do have a couple of questions myself, sir, and want to thank you and the entire team for all the work that you did last week. It was certainly not an easy issue, and I think that the team really tackled it head-on and addressed issues as a team. And I think that that showed in the response. Back to the, let's see, December 24th. Your second point was that the water tank transmitter froze, which gave a false water level on the tank. When the transmitter was unfrozen, was that level still good? Okay, all right. So I had someone ask me, and I didn't know the answer to this, so I'm posing it to you and the team. We've had freezes before and not had failure on this sort of catastrophic of a level. Do we have a sense of why everything happened now? Like what contributed to all of these things coming together and the system experiencing this type of failure?
Yes. Typically, in this region, we do not, we get hard freeze, but usually the next day, we're usually right back up close to freezing level, you know, the low 30s. Often, we immediately get back above freezing. You do not have below freezing for, in this case, I think it was at least, I think it was like four days, and even down into the single digits. That's unprecedented. And because of that, that hard freeze, literally, the ground freezes deeper. And it gets deeper than what our water pipes are buried. Most of the water pipes are buried around four foot deep. So small water lines going into houses are typically 12 inches deep. Those tend to freeze more quickly. Under crawl spaces, they freeze, and these water lines break. And in this case, because of the deep freeze, we actually had, as you noted, we had four six-inch water lines break. One of those was in a line that was a dead-end line with no movement. One of those was in a line, there was a dead-end line with no movement. But the other three were actually, you know, on main streets where we know water movement is good, and it's still froze because that's what causes them to, to break. That's unusual. Uh, and finding these leaks is really hard. Uh, because if it doesn't come to the surface, or if it's on a street that's closed and nobody's driving up and down it, or residents are not at home, which is the case we had, in this case, we had a large number of residents who were probably gone, out of town, visiting with relatives. We, we do not know that those leaks are even occurring. And it pulls the system down, and as soon, and you just can't keep up with demand. And I think that was very obvious in the fact that we had so many utilities around this area experience the same problems at the same time, and many of them much worse than us.
Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it. Another question that, that I received, could we do, could we do it on our own? Could we just have our own system and not rely on anyone else?
With a lot of time and a lot of money, possibly. The biggest problem is the City of College Park sits on a ridge. There's a railroad that runs downtown, and sort of everything is, flows away from the railroad tracks. And as a result, we would not have a very good water supply source, even if we could put in a water treatment plant. The City of East Point gets their water off of, of, um, Sweetwater, Sweetwater Creek. Uh, they have a reservoir out there that supplements their flow. Clayton County has a very large reservoir down in the very south part of their county. And, you know, the City of Atlanta just, you know, took over a reservoir. They, they were, their water supply was two days in peak flows for the whole city. Now it is thirty under peak flows and sixty under normal flow with the new reservoir they added. Those are all extremely expensive. City of East Point has a very reliable water supply, and they have a very reliable system. They had some unique circumstances that occurred there that impacted us, and we had things that happened to us that impacted us. We actually have a backup. We have Clayton County. Most municipalities do not have a backup. So you actually have a redundant system already. We do think that there are some things that we can do that perhaps will make our system, system, uh,
More resilient?
More resilient and less likely to have the same thing occur that would be cheaper to put in place than to try to build a new, have our own exclusive water treatment plant. Again, you could go through that whole process, I'm not even sure EPD would give us a water withdrawal permit to do that when there's, we already sort of have that through East Point.
Understood. I think you have a question in front of you. Someone has asked a question.
The question is Clayton County issued a boil water advisory on Saturday. College Park's boil water, uh, wasn't issued until much later. What and when are the triggers to explain the gap in time? Uh, I believe I can answer that, I may need a little input from Tim. Uh, but we were not pulling water. Our, the water that we take from Clayton County is done manually. We send somebody over there to turn the pumps on to take water from their system and fill our tanks. We had not turned those pumps on because at the time our tanks were, were filled and we were operating off the City of East Point's water system. So, uh, there was no reason to issue a boil water advisory because at that time we were not getting water from them. Our water was coming strictly from the City of East Point, and they had, they had not, nor, I don't think they ever implemented a boil water, uh, requirement in their city.
Not in East Point, I don't.
And that was, you know, I, I know that Tim talked regularly to Melissa over at the City of East Point. They taught continuously, they talked about, she was constantly telling them, yes, you can get water, no, you can't. She was trying to do everything she could to make, to make sure their system didn't go down as well. Because if their system went down, then they would never be able to even be able to help us at all. So, I thought Tim did a really good job in his communications with her. He was also talking to Cody over at Clayton County. Uh, and I think some things happened in Clayton County that maybe Cody didn't, was not aware of and didn't get communicated with him. Uh, but as soon as we reached out to, uh, the executive director over there, Bernard Frank, uh, he immediately, uh, began working with us, trying to help us out.
All right.
Do you wanna add anything, Tim?
I, I wanna add something. Um, one thing we wanna make sure is that we're updating with our contact information. I think someone touched on that before, but, uh, we're a multi-jurisdictional community and a very com- with a very complex intergovernmental structure. And, uh, I know we're gonna have a, a new city manager coming in here pretty soon. But, uh, we need to, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is and update things so that people are aware and we're aware who the people are and where the contacts are, and who's the new this and who's the new that, and and what services are we using, what services are we no longer using? We've got a lot of updating to do in terms of communications, communications, and this is all departments. I see stuff all the time that comes across as pretty dated and old information. Uh, so, so we need to be cognizant and and update our information so people have correct information and get correct information. Uh, our customer service packet, we've got a packet that, that I'm told that new residents get when they turn on electricity. That I'm also told by some residents, they don't get a, they don't get this. But a lot of the stuff in it is dated, and there are outfits that no longer are functioning in the services in that packet. And I guess no one's really fine-toothed comb to that directory and, uh, I mean, this isn't anything for, for, for you, uh, uh, Rob, but just for staff in general, we need to double-check and update things. I remember when we did our first city calendar, um, I wanted, I insisted that we put on the back page important contact numbers, uh, for residents to reach different areas of the city, so on and so forth. And the numbers were all on there, and I said, uh, okay, this looks good. And I said, well, how do we know all these numbers are still, still good? And someone told, one of the department heads said, oh, yeah, 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 these are the correct numbers, this and the other. And I said, well, I'm not so sure. And obviously, what I insisted, I said, call them, call them all and double-check. You know, and we've gotta make sure we're doing a lot of double-checking, 'cause when an emergency happens, you don't have time to double-check. So let's just keep that in mind. All right.
We did, and we, in, in fact, one of the things we did this morning is we all got together, department heads got together, and we did some lessons learned, and we started strategizing and talking. That was one of the things that came up was communications and the phone numbers of who to call in this emergency and making sure that the numbers that are given out are consistent.
All right, any other questions from the audience? Any other three-by-five index cards? All right, well, thank you so much, Mr. McPherson, I appreciate it. Um, we have, um, some additional business to attend to in executive session, so at this time I'll take a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussion of real estate.
No, so moved.
Thank you, Councilman Corn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous.